Let's call our Human Resources Committee to order. Madam Clerk, could you read the roll, please?
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Jacobs.
Mr. Morrissey.
Here.
Mr. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Lind. Mr. Amos.
Here.
Mr. Schmidt.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on the agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes. We have four items on the agenda today. If somebody would take number one, please.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Number one is a motion to request to initiate the civil service process to fill a position of lab services technician at the Waste Management Services Department and to make an appointment from that list pending pre-appointment physical and drug testing.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on this request. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes. Item number two. Mr. Morrissey.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to request, or I'd like to make a request to appoint facility service specialists from the civil service list for Waterloo Center for the Arts.
Second. We have a motion, a second on this request. Do you have any questions or discussion on this item? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Powers.
Request the Fire Chief to authorization to appoint three firefighter recruits from the civil service list.
I'll second. We have a motion, a second on this request. Questions? Discussion?
Mr. Chairman, if you would, Mr. Treelord, can you give us a little bit of information as far as what's going on with that?
Sheriff Pat Treelord, Fire Chief, we've had three of our personnel recently retire in the last few days, Fire Marshal Steve Jordan, Engineer Mike Kemy, and Engineer Darwin Bolts. So the request before you on number three is to hire three to replace the retirements to get to our authorized number of 109 and a half full-time equivalents.
Anyone else? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes. And item number four.
Mr. Chairman, number four is a request from Fire Chief for authorization to make two appointments from a current civil service list to the position of fire engineer.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on this request. Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Motion, a second and adjournment, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you. It's October 3rd, let's call our Finance Committee to order. Madam Clerk, would you read the roll, please?
Mr. Jacobs.
Here.
Mr. Powers.
Here.
Mr. Welper.
Here.
Mr. Chairman, I'll move the approval of the agenda and approval of the minutes from September 26, 2016 as proposed.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on the agenda and minutes. Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion passes. We have two items under travel requests today. One of you would take that?
Travel request, Lieutenant Ferguson to attend a class rough in and final inspections for fire sprinkler systems, West Alice, Wisconsin, over 31st through November 1st, amount not exceed $295.
Take number two there, too.
There's also a refund request for a property located at 1312 Wargate Avenue for garbage can fees, bill and air, totally $97.50.
I'll second both.
We have a motion, a second on the two items. Is there any questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, that motion, those motions pass. Pre-oths.
Mr. Chairman, I'll take those. Pre-oths over $1,000, airport amount and estimated shipping and handling of $2,900 for expenditure of staff requesting the removal to perform airfield painting services to the runway centerline on runway 1836 to allow for refreshed and reflectivity on the centerline of Aircraft Ops. Center Arts, amount and estimated shipping handling of $1,400 expenditure advertising with Lamar for four billboards to promote Holiday Arts Festival in 2016. Request from the Clerk's office, the amount and estimated shipping handling of $5,401 expenditure, membership renewal from National League of Cities for the year 2017. And Leisure Services, the amount and estimated shipping handling of $2,780, and this expenditure is for the transport of baseball, softball infield material. Another one from Leisure Services, the amount and estimated shipping handling of $2,040 expenditure infield material for baseball slash softball fields. And the Safety Committee, the amount estimated shipping handling of $2,850 expenditure HR connect training with Safety Fair, Human Resource Training, Safety Fair and team building. And the sanitation amount and estimated shipping handling of $25,650 expenditure for new engine and rebuilt transmission. Traffic operations, the amount and estimated shipping handling of $15,940 expenditures is for, is for, for controllers, six BTUs and two NEMA MMU2s.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion, a second on the pre-oths. Any questions or discussion on any of those items?
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Lind.
Kelly, what do we get for $500 a month for the National League of Cities membership? Is it worth it?
Yeah, part of that membership goes to our certifications that we're supposed to upkeep as part of, as part of certified clerks. So that's certification that Suzie had been paying for, and then as I become certified, we'll continue to use that for me as well. And what we get out of it is when there's, we get training for that, training opportunities as well as information that we use in our job as well.
And that Safety Committee, team building for $3,000, $2,850, what's, what's that?
That is part of the Health and Wellness Fair for employees that'll be going on the 11th through the 13th. And that expenditure, I believe, was used for part of the Health and Wellness Fair last year as well.
It's about conflict training. Just show the nurse if I'm throwing my two cents, because that training is conflict resolution, which all of our employees deal with on a daily basis, so I would hope it'll, a lot of people will find it very valuable.
It should for $2,800.
Anyone else? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign, those motions pass. Today we have two items on a budget line of amendments which are on file in the City Clerk's Office, and the bills payment this week is $2,463,928.55.
Second.
We have a motion, a second on the bills payment, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Bills are paid.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion for adjournment.
Second.
Motion, a second and adjournment, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you.
On hard copy as well as electronically but must be read into the record. Item 1A11 is a request by Izette Cage-Tesovich for adherence to the noise ordinance on Saturday, October 8th, 2016 from 10:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. for the 8th Annual Chestnut Festival to be held at Burns Park along with live music and the use of a P.A. system. It was added without 24-hour notice to accommodate the event date. Also, a new item number six is a resolution authorizing 100% rebate of building, plumbing, electrical, and heating permit fees for primary owner-occupied residential property damaged in the 2016 flood for only that portion of the damage caused by the flood. Again, that was added without the 24-hour notice to provide full flood recovery as assistance to residents impacted by the flood. And then amended the ordinance surveillance camera for certain businesses. It was amended to correct the number of readings of ordinance from two to three and to make this item number seven on the agenda. And also the approval of the minutes of September 26, 2016, regular session as proposed.
Second.
That motion has been made with the second. Any questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
All right, that items carry. We have an agenda. Now we have proclamation declaring October 7th as Trigeminal Neuropia Awareness Day. And Sarah Papenheimer, are you in the audience? Would you please join me? You can tell me if I'm wrong.
It's trigeminal neuralgia. Very close.
Okay, I'm gonna try again while I'm talking. City of Waterloo, Iowa proclamation, whereas...
Trigeminal neuralgia.
Trigeminal neuralgia is a chronic pain condition that affects the trigeminal or fifth cranial nerve, one of the most widely distributed nerves in the head, and is characterized by recurrent shock light or burning facial pain. Whereas several facial pain, severe facial pain can last from a second to several minutes with some individuals having up to 100 lightning-like bursts of stabbing facial pain in a day. And whereas...
Trigeminal neuralgia.
...can occur at any age but usually onset is after age 40 and in 90% of cases with a female-to-male ratio of 2 to 1. And whereas, an estimated 1 in 15,000 people suffers from...
Trigeminal neuralgia.
Although, although numbers may be higher due to misdiagnosis with an estimated 45,000 people in the U.S. and 1 million people worldwide who suffer from this disease. And whereas, the disease entity of...
Trigeminal neuralgia.
...neuralgia has been known for centuries and was once labeled the suicide disease because of the significant numbers of people who took their own lives before effective treatments were discovered. Now I therefore, Quinton Hart, Mayor of Waterloo, City of Waterloo, do hereby proclaim October 17th, 2016 as Trigeminal Neuralgia Awareness Day and encourage all to light up teal, supporting the fighters, admiring the survivors, and honoring those taken by the disease so as to never give up hope in finding a cure. So please, tell us about this very, very serious condition.
Well, I think that you covered it in the proclamation. You know, it, it is a horrific disease. It strikes normally people over 50, but it can start at any age. So I just really want to thank you for taking the time to bring the awareness. I urge others to please wear teal on Friday, light up the city in teal, do anything you can to bring awareness to this disease. We need research, we need awareness, and we need a cure.
All right, all right. Thank you very much, and thank you for your advocacy and your efforts for educating some of us that may not have known about this. So, thank you very much. Very touching today. Also, another item on the agenda is the recognition of Dustin Lindeman, one of our police officers, for October 2016 Team Member of the Month. He is not here today, I believe. He's with child first, maybe? Child, I believe. So he is somewhere else today and couldn't be with us. So we want to let him know that we appreciate all his efforts as well for the City of Waterloo. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda. That's items 1 through 3, and within that are the bill's payment. And the bill's payment this week is $2,463,928.55. Two comma, four, six, three, comma, nine, two, eight point five five.
Second.
All right, that motion has been made with the proper second. Any questions, counsel?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
If I could just ask real quickly, I assume this has been vetted, but item 1D2B, excuse me, 2C, the liquor license for New World Lounge 2, that is not one of our problem establishments over off the Broadway?
Dan Tralka, Chief of Police, it did not meet the threshold to be denied by the Police Department.
Have we, have we had issues there?
Um...
Just not enough?
It has, it's doing better.
Good. Thank you.
All right. Any other questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Thank you. We have an appointment. Is Rick Jacks in the audience? Rick? All right, Rick Jacks was a newest member of the Historic Preservation Commission, so thank you for your service. And also, we have, to my left, Mr. Jim Rodemeyer, who is our interim H.R. Director. So we look forward to your service to the city and, and welcome back.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir.
Item number 2 is a motion to receive and file proof of publication and notice of public hearing, and that's a request by North Crossing LLC to vacate, sell, and convey a portion of Logan Avenue Frontage Road right-of-way adjacent to 2038 Logan Avenue.
Second.
Second. That motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That item carries. We now have the hearing. Madam Clerk, are there any comments on file?
There are no comments on file.
Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak for or against this particular item on the agenda? Going a second time.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to close the hearing.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That is, hearing is closed.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the first time, an ordinance approving the vacation of a portion of Logan Avenue Frontage Road right-of-way located adjacent to 2038 Logan Avenue and creating a permanent utility easement on a portion of said right-of-way.
Second.
The motion has been made with the second. Counsel, any questions about this item?
Mr. Mayor, could we just get a little overview?
No.
Noel Anderson, Community Planning Development Director. The vacation of the Frontage Road is obviously going to give them a little bit more land out there for the redevelopment of Logan Plaza. They are working on their site plan layout. We think this is a beneficial redevelopment of that area as well as freeing the city up from responsibility of having the Frontage Road out there. You may recall, probably about two years ago, when we redid Donald Street and added some turn lanes and some improvements there, we actually closed that southern entrance onto the, the Frontage Road. So it doesn't really function as a full frontage road anymore. We think it'll be better for traffic purposes of the redevelopment to not have it there and just have it as part of their parking lot and, and give them, again, some more land to work with.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Any, are there any other questions, counsel? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
All right, that item carries.
Mr. Mayor, make a motion to spend the rules.
Second.
Motion's been made with the second. Madam Clerk, any questions? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, that items carry. 5 and 6, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes, sir.
Item number 5 is adopting a resolution approving a one-month extension to the memorandum of agreement with Waterloo Community School District to extend technical and professional services in the operation of the Waterloo Educational Access Channel. And item number 6 is adopting a resolution authorizing 100% rebate of building, plumbing, electrical, and heating permit fees for primary owner-occupied residential property damaged in the 2016 flood for only that portion of damage caused by the flood.
Second.
All right, that motion has been made with the second. Are there any questions about these items? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, that items carry. 5 and 6, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes, sir.
Item number 5 is adopting a resolution approving a one-month extension to the memorandum of agreement with Waterloo Community School District to extend technical and professional services in the operation of the Waterloo Educational Access Channel. And item number 6 is adopting a resolution authorizing 100% rebate of building, plumbing, electrical, and heating permit fees for primary owner-occupied residential property damaged in the 2016 flood for only that portion of damage caused by the flood.
Second.
All right, that motion has been made with the second. Are there any questions about these items? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
All right, that items carry. 5 and 6, please.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes, sir.
Item number 5 is adopting a resolution approving a one-month extension to the memorandum of agreement with Waterloo Community School District to extend technical and professional services in the operation of the Waterloo Educational Access Channel. And item number 6 is adopting a resolution authorizing 100% rebate of building, plumbing, electrical, and heating permit fees for primary owner-occupied residential property damaged in the 2016 flood for only that portion of damage caused by the flood.
Second.
All right, that motion has been made with the second. Are there any questions about these items? Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mr. Morrissey?
Yes.
Mr. Powers?
Yes.
Mr. Lind?
Yes.
Mr. Amos?
Yes.
Mr. Schmidt?
Yes.
Mr. Whopper?
Yes.
All right, that items carry.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Number 7, a motion to receive, file, consider, and pass for the third time and adopt an ordinance repealing Title V, Chapter 4, Convenience Store Security in its entirety and in acting in lieu of a new Title V, Chapter 4 surveillance camera for certain businesses.
Second.
Motion has been made with the second.
Chief? There, there are going to be significant changes made to this ordinance, so we're going to ask that it be tabled, and we will bring it back for a first reading again. Lieutenant Fangman has been meeting with several council members, several business owners, and I think we're to a point where we're getting close to agreed-on language for the ordinance.
So, Mr. Mayor, I would make that motion to table this item. Chief, do you have a timeframe in mind? I, I think, you know, we've been doing two weeks, two weeks, and that obviously has not been enough.
Counsel?
Should this just be denied since there will be several changes and then we start over?
Right. That works.
Can we just make a motion to rescind?
I mean, just demotion?
But you, you vote it down, yeah? Okay. Because then you'll have three readings of something totally different. All right, so there's a motion on the table to pass this, and I'm hearing we need more time, so... Everybody understand?
Yeah.
All right. Madam Clerk, roll call vote.
Mr. Morrissey?
No.
Mr. Powers?
No.
Mr. Lind?
No.
Mr. Amos?
No.
Mr. Schmidt?
No.
Mr. Whopper?
No.
Mr. Jacobs?
No.
All right, that item fails. We'll bring it back with numerous changes. Way to reach out to the community and get some more conversation. Now it's oral presentations time. I don't know what to do. It's... Oh, no, no. Right now we have, is there Nick Moller, who has requested to come and have some conversation about drain disconnect? So, Nick, please join us. State your name and address for the record.
My name's Nick Moller. I'm at 1733 Corning Avenue. I have, I complied with the city ordinance here as far as having to have the drain disconnect done and everything. And the contractor in which I hired has done, seriously, I have several pictures here, a seriously unacceptable job on my home. And on top of that, has come in and destroyed my home. And no matter which direction I go, I keep getting sent off to somebody else as far as the inspections office goes because of the fact their hands are tied, there's nothing they can do. From what I've come to learn, once they bust open your floor and hook up the drain system, they no longer have control of this job. It's done, it's over with. And on top of that, the minute you sign the paperwork saying, yes, the drain part has been completed, the contractor at that time has guaranteed payment. The work is not done yet, and everybody's saying it's over with and done. And now I have got myself stuck in a jam here with a floor that is all tore up, the safety features of the drain are falling down inside the drain. I have got a cleaning bill that is close to $1,000. And I'm sitting here hung out, out to dry because the city has already paid the contractor for the work being done. And I, as far as I'm concerned, I think this issue here needs to be addressed on how these contractors are turning in, submitting a bill, and being paid before the work is completed. This is a serious flaw that needs to be addressed. Because I, I don't know how many times this has happened. I don't know if I'm the only person, or if nobody else has spoken up yet about this. I'm not sure. But this is a serious flaw. I'm, I'm stuck in a spot here, and I need to know from your guidance, what am I supposed to do here? The contractor's already been paid.
What I will have you do is, Mr. Noel Anderson will get your contact information from you today, and he will look into the situation and give you a call tomorrow once he does a little bit of research into your situation. So you have my word on that. So after, soon as the meeting is over, get with Noel and get him your contact info. We'll, we'll take a look into it.
Okay.
All right, thank you, sir. Mr. Mayor?
Maybe we make a new record of length here or something. Randy here, 111 Highland Boulevard. Here at recent times, there's been talk about a Department of Justice study that was done during the time of the last mayor. And my understanding is it's been addressed and, and being taken care of and like that. Even so, can we citizens get a copy of that Department of Justice report?
Yeah, it's online.
It is online?
Yeah.
Through the city website?
I don't think it's on the city's website, but if you give me a call tomorrow, I'll direct you to where you want to go. But that's a, yeah, it's out there.
All right, thank you.
All right.
Good evening, Mayor Hart and City Council members. My name is Jonathan Sofa. I live at 318 West 3rd Street. You may remember me from last week. I'm leading a group of residents now officially known as Grow Waterloo, whose purpose is to help bring valuable input and to assist in projects and ventures which will lead to the prosperity and growth of Waterloo. I wanted to take this time to show my appreciation for the timely communication of Mr. Paul Hudding, Councilman Schmidt, Mr. Kent Schenkel, and Mr. Noel Anderson. Thank you. We have scheduled a meeting for this Friday, October 7th, to discuss the matter of the Waterloo Public Market's future. We have extended an invitation to Councilman Morrissey to attend this meeting as well.